Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting in order of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for the Town of Rising Sun. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer, please? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the Town of Rising Sun. I ask that you please watch over our citizens as well as our law enforcement, not only here in our town but also throughout our county. I ask that you please watch over our armed forces that are serving overseas and everyone as they leave here tonight. Thank you. Amen. Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Authenreth?
Present.
Commissioner Warnock?
Here.
Mayor Marion?
Here.
Let the record be reflected, all of the elected officials.
Thank you. First on the agenda tonight is an appointment for our Board of Commissioners. I have a brief statement I would like to make. First and foremost, I want to thank all that expressed interest in this position. Public service is a big venture that should never be taken lightly. This position will have an impact on your family, your friends, and your time. You will be loved by some and hated by others. You ultimately will have to make hard choices that not everyone will agree with. So I thank all of those that decided to express interest in this position. Tonight I appoint a person who I believe will bring balance to our board, someone who cares about our community and our citizens, and someone who believes the best days for Rising Sun are the days ahead. This person has previously served on our board in the early 2000's. I have a lot of personal respect for him, and I will also say that this was a group decision. I involved both of the gentlemen sitting on my left and right in this decision, and they unanimously agreed that this person was the right person for this position. So with that, I will be moving forward with nominating Mr. Augie Pearson to fill the vacancy left by Commissioner Shepherd on the Board of Commissioners.
I move to accept.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding this nomination? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I now will ask Ms. Nakotera to come up, a clerk of the Circuit Court. I know I got that wrong, I do apologize. Notarcola, Ms. Notarcola, to come up and swear in Mr. Pearson. If Mr. Pearson, you can come up. We're going to go ahead and step aside so that...
(inaudible)
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 Because I took a different approach to, I'm sorry.
Haven't done one in a month because the last time we.
Well, yeah, that too. I took a different approach to this report to get some information out there that I think is important for the elected body. During this period from November 1st till today, we've had 453 calls for service. During that time, we've had to manage some of the following. I had 26 hours of training that I had to get the guys in, and we still have more training to get before the end of the year. There was 34.5 hours of sick leave taken, 33 hours of vacation, 30 hours of holiday, and 36 hours of family medical leave for a childbirth. So that doesn't leave me with a whole lot of time. And addition to that, there's court hours, where the guys spend quite a bit of time in court. So that reduces the number of hours that we actually have officers on the street. So take that into consideration when I start giving you some of the other statistics. Valley View, since the last meeting, the hours, the officers have been instructed to spend a cumulative hour per shift in Valley View. So during their shift, they have to spend at least an hour in there looking for violations. So far, we've had five traffic stops and one parking citation. We're looking for those violations of the bus lane and the signage that's posted in the development. There's also been a lot of conversation about Main Street and the traffic that goes up and down Main Street. So a lot of this report's going to focus on Main Street, West Main Street, for speeding violations and the school bus issues. Along West Main Street, we've stopped six vehicles for speeding and one vehicle for following too close. Along East Main Street, we have stopped 15 vehicles for speed, two suspended licenses resulted out of that, 14 vehicles for equipment violations, two for following too close, 22 other violations. When I say other violations, it could be failure to yield, turn signals, and a multitude of vehicle code violations, resulting in one heroin arrest. For our criminal arrests for the month, we had the one heroin and two fugitives from other areas. I also stopped and took a look at the entire 2016 for our controlled dangerous substance cases that we've had. Total was 45. Of those, 19 were along Main Street. So the officers are out on Main Street. And all of those cases, with the exception of two, three came as a result of traffic stops. Okay? Where other communities have the large open-air drug markets with individuals standing on the steps of houses or on the side of the road, we don't see that here. So our work is predominantly from traffic stops or a deeper investigation to get into a resident. Our guys have done, by my calculations, 42% of those cases occur on Main Street. As far as motor vehicle collisions, I also looked at Main Street again. We had a total of 18 motor vehicle collisions that are reportable. Not all accidents that occur are reportable. Of those, nine were on Main Street. Only four were injury. And when I say injuries, they are not life-threatening injuries. They are people going to the hospital for bumps and bruises. We've had no fatalities in the town. Any questions about that, any of those statistics? Lastly, we've had the honor of two of our officers being honored within the last month or so. Dallas Herbert, as I may have said this before, received an award for his DWI enforcement. His production in town has been outstanding when it comes to driving under the influence. In addition, Steve McKinney was recognized by the Cecil County Chamber of Commerce for his work in the community also. Although it doesn't seem like it at times, our guys do a phenomenal job at what they do, especially when we're only working with the number of hours that we've worked in a month. And lastly, the holidays are upon us. There are a few safety tips. I know you can't read what's on the screen right now because it's very small and I can't even see it, but I've left copies here at the stand that will probably give you some heads up as to what not to do to become a victim. So feel free to grab one on your way out. And that is my report, unless there's any questions.
Chief, Shop With A Cop is coming up.
Shop With A Cop is on December 10th. If you would like to be a part as a volunteer, go to Cecil County Shop With The Cop Cecil County online. The website will allow you to register as a volunteer. My understanding is they have above 60 youth that will be assisted, and it's still growing from my understanding. So the more volunteers, the better. And if you have ever taken part of anything that seems overwhelmingly gratifying, I know you do your own, and yours is still wonderful.
They're doing 70.
They're doing 70? Okay. Last time I talked with them, it was a little lower, but 70, if we can keep going. The problem we're having is we're running out of facilities that can house the amount of children, people, and support that we can muster up, but it's a great event.
How many of the officers are going to be taking part in it?
All of the officers want to take part, which means it's a scheduling nightmare for me because I have to have coverage here in town. But all of the officers want to take part. They all, you know, they do similar things like this year-round. You just don't hear about them. But they all want to take part. And again, if you haven't seen it, go online. You can look at last year's. There's videos of it. If you want to participate, I'm quite sure we would love to have the help. And it goes beyond just helping the kids. It's helping the families because many of the families leave there with a full Christmas dinner. And some have left with Christmas trees as a result of some officers going back after, you know, Shop With A Cop.
I did receive your email from Trooper Russell asking if I would attend. I obviously will attend, and I'll open it up for the elected body to come as well.
Thank you.
Chief, do you have a figure of how much has been raised so far, just to give residents an idea of how much is spent on these needy families, but still how short it may be a big number, but how short it still comes up?
I couldn't give you a number. The last time I dealt with the financial end of it was a few years ago. We raised somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000 some thousand. That was prior to doing the great fundraising that we're doing now. There are several fundraising events during the year. So I believe those numbers are growing, and it's still needed. Yeah, we raise a lot of money, but we still need money to help carry this out.
And can you throw out there where somebody, just hearing about it tonight, wanted to make a donation?
Same website.
Same website. It's actually Cecil County. It's actually shopwithacopcc.com. Shopwithacopcc.com.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward, is there any old business tonight? Is there any new business? All right. We'll move into the mayor's report. My report is pretty brief. I did attend Mrs. Miller's honors English class at Rising Sun Middle School. I thoroughly enjoyed it. They want me to come back. And Calvin, do I have the wrong agenda by chance? Was there anything else on the agenda? Oh, I forgot you, Calvin. Sorry about that. I mean, I just went right on to my report. No, you can go ahead. You're good. I'll hold it.
Well, I do, the only thing on my report, I do have something that's rather important for the board to have in the minutes in the record. This has to do with interim financing for the water line. And you have the memo. Commissioner Pearson, you just got the memo, and I'm going to go over essentially what it is. If you remember back in August, September, you passed resolutions saying that you were going to go out and get interim financing. And one of the interesting curveballs, changes that USDA has enacted is when we did the wastewater treatment plant, USDA does not pay the town back for its expenses until the project is done. So when we built the wastewater treatment plant, we went to settlement with USDA right around the time that the sewer plant was done. In that particular case, we went to settlement twice because it was two different bonds. So they closed on one bond halfway through and the second bond at the end. And Commissioner Pearson, because I think this was started when you were on board before, we got interim financing at that point. And that interim financing was, if you imagine being a small community, which there are lots of small communities in the state of Maryland, they'd have big dollar infrastructure projects. And when you get your money from the federal government, they won't give it to you until the project is done. So not a lot of small communities have millions of dollars sitting around to do infrastructure projects. So you get interim financing. And so when we were doing the wastewater treatment plant, we got the $13 million of interim financing. And as we threw a, at that time, we were through PNC Bank, and as we accumulated expenses paying the contractor, we would send paperwork to USDA. They would sign off on it, and then we would get money wired to us from PNC to make us whole. And then when we went to settlement, USDA would pay PNC Bank off. That's the settlement. So that's the interim financing. The change that USDA has done this year is they will not approve the selection of interim financing until you have all your permits in hand and construction documents done. So imagine what that means. That means you're paying an engineering firm a couple hundred thousand dollars and attorneys to get everything where it needs to be before they will even let you go out and get interim financing. And so again, back to the model of small communities don't have lots of money sitting around to do that. So believe it or not, we had to get a bridge loan to get to the interim financing, to get to the money that USDA gives us at the end of the day. So this is a bridge loan, is what we talked about back in August and September of going out and getting a bridge loan. So what you have in front of you is a bridge loan that essentially we could use the bridge loan for the entire eight, eight some odd million dollars of construction cost because there's other ancillary costs associated with this project. But this bridge loan would allow us to get reimbursed, and this company is called Cobank. We could get reimbursed to them for up to $8 million, but initially, we are only asking for $750,000 to get us to, A, either reimburse us for the money that we've spent already, which is what shows up in Ms. Wagner's report about some of the deficits in the water fund is because we are bankrolling those expenses. So we can get, we are going to get $750,000. We can either pay for what we've done in the past and become whole and have the money to pay for what's going forward, or we can use the $750 to pay for what should occur going forward. So the first tranche of that is $750,000. Now, some of the, this will be, this, this bridge loan will be bought out by the interim financing once we have permits in hand and construction documents approved. So let's hypothetically say that's around July of 2017. That means this bridge loan will get us to July 2017. When we get our projects approved, USDA will say, okay, you can now go out and get interim financing, and the remaining eight, nine, $10 million, depending upon bid prices, come back. Then that entity will buy out this bridge loan, and then we'll be paying under the principles or terms of the interim financing until USDA buys it out when the project is done. Is everybody keeping up with me so far? So the language that you see in this document is basically, you know, saying that we can borrow up to eight, this is $8.4 million. It'll be bought out by USDA or the interim financing. One of the caveats in here, and this is the interesting thing, we've talked before in our discussions about changes in the banking industry, and we've talked about how that's affected land development and developers with the regulatory changes, having to actually put dollar per dollar up in letters of credit to build developments. These regulatory changes occur here, too, that all the banks, banks are now held responsible to make sure that they're giving out good loans. So one of the covenants of this is that we cannot go out and borrow any more money to spend on the water system while this bridge loan is in play. So basically, they've looked at our numbers, and they are, okay, we're comfortable. You can pay this back, but they don't want us to go out and incur any more debt on the water system. We can incur debt if necessary anywhere else but in the water system itself. You see that the annual rate of this is one, we're getting this money at 1.2% above the higher of 0% or the one-month US dollar LIBAR interest rate. So it's a very good rate. The third or fourth page of this talks about, you know, how long it will be out there, the loan will be good for. Bear in mind, we will probably have this particular bridge loan for no more than maybe a year, getting up to July of next year. And then we'll be under some different terms with a different lending institution. Now, let me give you this caveat. There's nothing that says that when this bridge loan is paid off, we might be going back to this entity for the interim financing because the rates are unbelievably good. Now, also, truth be told, this Cobank is sort of a thing that was established by the federal government for these specific types of situations for infrastructure financing of municipal governments that don't have a lot of money sitting around to pay for these types of things. So that's what this bank is set up for, is to help municipalities with these infrastructure. So that's basically the particulars of the Cobank bridge loan.
Do I need a motion?
You can if you want.
Okay. Can I get a motion to confirm or to allow the interim financing for the Chester Water Line through Cobank?
I'll make a motion. We accept the Cobank interim financing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Calvin. Is the amount of $750,000 sufficient to cover the initial cost?
Yes. From what we think we're going to need from an engineering and permitting standpoint, and to also make us whole for some of the stuff that we've spent already, yes.
Okay. So we don't come back in six months, and we will not be able to renew this or re-up this loan, correct?
No. The loan is good for 8.4.
But the $750,000 is what we're going for right now.
Look at this as sort of like a line of credit for 8.6 million. It's sitting there. We can say, oh, we need more. There's nothing that has to be signed in.
If in the permit process and engineering, we come across additional cost that we're, that none of us, that's unforeseen right now, we have the capability of getting more money?
Yes. Yes.
That's all I.
We, let me just clarify, because we're going to be paying interest on this, obviously. So we don't want to have more. We tried to give a good estimate of what amount of money we would need, so we're not paying any more interest.
That's fine. That's real clear in here. But experience has taught us that we've run across costs that we didn't ever anticipate. And I just want to make sure that we're not going to get caught without a means of financing since we can't go out and get any more money when we agree to this.
Right.
That we have this sufficient financing and a backup through this bank.
Right.
That is correct, right?
Yes. So go to page two, one, two, three paragraphs down. It says Cobank will advance funds to the town under the bond anticipation of, from time to time, as described below, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,485,000.
Got that. Got that.
So that's the coverage that you're asking for.
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion? Caring none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion passes. Town administrators, is there anything else?
That's it.
I do apologize for running you right over. You're probably used to it by now, so. All right. Moving forward into the mayor's report, like I said before, I attended Mrs. Miller's honors English class at Rising Sun Middle School. I thoroughly enjoyed the question-and-answer time with the kids. They call it a touchstone circle, where the kids are in a large circle and ask me all sorts of questions, from funny stuff to really serious stuff. I mean, I had a sixth grader ask me how I balance work, personal, life. So a lot of them were serious questions. But I'm excited to come back. The kids are excited for me to come back in spring. So I'll be back there at Rising Sun Middle School in the spring to do more question-and-answer time with the mayor, I guess. I also wanted to say that most recently at our last town meeting, I announced about Mr. Chris Wiggins, who graciously put a blue line in front of our town hall. Chris will be adding a small red line, which will be right next to Howard Bank. He will be doing that very soon, and that is to honor our first responders for all they do as well. Both of these are permanent expressions to thank not only our police, but our first responders for all they do for our community. So I want to say a big thank you to Chris Wiggins for doing that. In addition, we have our 46th Annual Community Carol Sing, which is going to be December 6th at 7:00 PM at Rising Sun Town Hall. One of the really cool additions about this Carol Sing was a few years ago, I decided to add back in a Christmas tree lighting. And every single year, I would get a free Christmas tree from a local Christmas tree farm, and we would do a Christmas tree lighting. Well, this year, I had a couple of residents ask me, you know, what's stopping you from doing a big tree? And nothing was really stopping us except for finding somebody that was willing to chop down a big tree and to place it where it is. So this year, we're looking at having a 25 to 30-foot tree, which we will have up in our community for the holiday season. We will have it decorated, and it'll be there for all to enjoy. I again want to thank Chaz Blandford and Chris Wiggins for volunteering to do this. Not only are they going to bring the tree in, but they're also building a stand to put the tree on, and they are lending a bucket truck for our public works crew to decorate the tree. So I'm very excited about that. I've been working with the chief and Calvin a little bit in, you know, where to put it to make sure that we don't have any issues with power lines or anything like that. But we're very excited. According to our past history, this was something that was done for many years in the past, and we're excited to bring back a large tree for Christmas time. I did want to say, one of the other things that I forgot to mention at our last town meeting was a big thank you to Commissioner Warnock for helping me with Plumpton Park Zoo. We donated all our leftover pumpkins to Plumpton Park Zoo. And I keep getting all these pictures from the owners of Plumpton Park Zoo of all these different animals enjoying the pumpkins. So it was a great service to do that to them. And she also wanted me to remind them that Christmas trees will also be accepted for the animals as well, once the holiday season is done. So that concludes my report. Moving into Commissioner comments, Commissioner Alton Reith.
Thank you, sir. Welcome back, Commissioner Pearson. And we thank you for coming back on board and putting in the time. And once again, congratulations on your retirement from the fire department. Very dangerous job, and we glad you made it through safely, as well as all your coworkers.
So am I.
I want to say thanks to a family over in Brian's Grace, the Barnett family. They called me on a Sunday night, and about something they heard, and they were kind of apologizing for bothering me, but they heard a noise coming from a fire hydrant in front of their house. And normally, fire hydrants don't make a noise. And I called Calvin to confirm that. He said, yeah, you better go over and listen. And they heard what sounded like different things. I thought it sounded like an air leak. They thought it sounded like water flowing through. And so it was better safe to have it checked out by one of our town guys. Grant came out that night and checked it out, and we found that it wasn't anything serious. It was an air pocket that was bleeding through, but it could have been something bad. So if you hear something like that going on, fire hydrants are not supposed to make noise. And if you hear a noise coming from it, don't feel bad about contacting us, emailing us, calling us or something. Come check it out. So I want to thank them for that. On the streets and sidewalk stuff, we really haven't had much going on. We're now getting into that crazy weather, that this big temperature drop, you know how that can affect sidewalks, underground pipes and all. So we're into that time of year now where we're going to keep our fingers crossed that our infrastructure holds up, and we don't have any water main breaks or any water pipes. So if you haven't already, turn off your outside faucets, disconnect your water hoses, and prep your house for winter. As we know, our water's gotten expensive, and we don't want to waste any of it. So if you have access in your basement to shut off valves, get a ladder, not a box, and stand on to shut it off.
Right here.
And happy Thanksgiving to everyone. You know, spend time with your families. Remember those who are not as fortunate. And the Shop With A Cop program is not just for Christmas, but, you know, people may need Thanksgiving help also. So thanks for everybody for coming out tonight. And as we go into this holiday season, enjoy, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Alton Reith. Commissioner Pearson?
Well, this is very unusual, be sitting on this side again. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for asking me if I was, would be interested in doing this. Having retired, I have a lot more free time than I ever thought I would. So it does give me a chance to really see things the way they are now, where before, when you're running between jobs and raising a family, you don't see things in the same perspective. Now, I can sit and look at things and, you know, get a better perspective. I hope to be able to do a reasonably good job. I will tell you, I have calmed down a lot. I have learned a few things over the last several years that your blood pressure does not get you anywhere when it is riding very high. So don't think, though, for one minute that I will ever stop speaking my mind. That's gotten me in trouble in the past, but it's also gotten me some things. If you disagree with something, instead of us arguing in public, let's sit down and deal with it, okay? It's no use, and I've learned a lot, in dealing with dirty laundry with everybody. If you've got a problem, let's deal with it. If you still want to, we still bring it to the board. We still bring it to the public. But this isn't a confrontation anymore. This is, we work together to try to get something resolved. And again, thank you for asking me to come back.
Thank you, Augie. Commissioner Warnock?
I'd just like to welcome Commissioner Pearson back to the board. I believe it was under your term that I was appointed, first appointed to Planning and Zoning Commission. So it's funny how the world rotates, I suppose. But I always respected Commissioner Pearson's passion and his integrity. So I look forward to working with you moving forward. And a little bit on the Shop With A Cop program, as the mayor had pointed out earlier, himself and Commissioner Shepard and myself last year attended that. And it's, it is a very good experience. They do, they have a lot of needs. They, I can't remember the exact amount last year per child, but.
It was 300.
Yeah, I was thinking it was 300. And, you know, think about in your own Christmas budget, how far $300 goes. It, you know, I mean, it's not very far, but the kids are kind of given a choice of, you know, do they want to go? know, do they want to go out and get that tablet and a couple other small things, or, you know, do they want to, like, some of them, they're actually kind of encouraged to think about themselves first, and if they want to get some stuff for their family, that's okay, but they, it's, a lot of them, they have good hearts, and they want to go out and go shopping for their families, and they don't think about themselves, and they kind of, so, I mean, think about three hundred dollars, it just doesn't go very far. And so, I would encourage anybody that's thinking about it to contribute some to that, and it is a really good cause, and it's really amazing to watch. So, you know, you see a lot of really tough men and women in uniform, you know, practically in tears at times throughout the day as it's going on. I mean, you know, it's pretty amazing. So, that, to the Parks and Rec, we've had some pretty good movement on the, we talked about earlier, the project in Veterans Park. We're probably looking around March to start breaking ground on the, I believe it'll be the stream bed restoration portion of it first, and then we'll move into, you know, we're going to, we've got things to consider, like, we don't want to be disruptive to different events going on throughout the year. So, we'll be working around, for example, the Civil War reenactment and such, but we're hoping to have the entire project wrapped up by around October, I believe it was, was the, hopefully, the completion date for all four phases of it. So, with that, that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Last thing that I want to say is a big thank you to Augie for stepping up and deciding to take this position. I'm sure he will say that we had multiple meetings where we covered every single thing, and I put him through the wringer with questions and comments, and he still wanted to do this. So, I want to thank him so much for doing that, and I want to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. I hope you have an amazing time with your family and friends, and take a moment to think of those underprivileged when you surround yourself with your family and possibly say a prayer for them. Our next town meeting is scheduled for December the thirteenth. The planning commission meeting is December the nineteenth at six-thirty, and then the town hall will be closed on Thursday, November the twenty-fourth, and Friday, November the twenty-fifth. With that said, is there any more business to come forward aboard this evening? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
It's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.